All right, welcome to the town council meeting for Tuesday, November fourteenth, two thousand and twenty-three. It is seven P. M. And we are here in the Harvey Room. Call to order and roll call, please.
Council Honan, Council Fusillo.
Here.
Council Munson.
Here.
Council Belcher.
Here.
Council DiMarco.
Here.
Council Flahcutt.
Here.
Council Aiello. Vice President Ruggiero.
Here.
President Letary.
Thank you. Yeah. Please stand for the pledge. Pledge by Councilor DiMarco.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, general information, just before, as we're starting here, I just want to thank the town clerk and all her poll workers for getting us through another election.
Thank you.
It was well done. It works out really well with the five precincts down at the middle school and the one at Golden Drive. It worked out really well. You know, the turnout was weak, a little weak.
Yeah, that more.
But it's, but you know, the poll workers, I think, thought it was even busier because there was less, you know, we've been getting about a thousand early voters, and now this year we didn't really have the early voting.
Right, right.
But it worked out well, so thank you for that. And congratulations to the new councillors. Some of them are here tonight. John DeRoz, who will be our new precinct six councillor. This is Ian Twop is here, our new precinct four councillor. And I talked to Max earlier. Max, his kids are under the weather, so we wish them speedy health. And congratulations to Max Tascinari, who will also be here taking over for council at large. And they still have a few meetings left, but obviously Vice President Ruggiero, for his years of service. Council Honan, who's unable to be here tonight, and Council Flahcutt, we thank you. But we will, we'll have more festivities as we get into December, but thank you for your service. Now we'll go to a public hearing.
How about the minutes?
Sure, why not? Minutes circulated for October seventeenth, two thousand and twenty-three meeting. Everybody had a chance to look them over. Any questions?
I got a question.
The first is there were motion to approve.
Motion.
Motion, motion made by Council Belcher, seconded by Council Flahcutt, discussion. Council DiMarco.
I was mistakenly listed as present on the minutes of the last meeting. I was not here.
I fixed that after you sent it back to me.
Okay.
For your abstain. Thank you.
Yep.
All right, any other comments? All those in favor of approval of the minutes signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no abstain, one, one abstention. Now let's try the public hearing. So we're going to open a public hearing that the town council appropriates the sum of nine hundred and eighty thousand to pay for cost of replacing lead water service lines. Council Fusillo.
Yes, so this was talked about in our meeting, Finance Committee meeting. This is a program we've been doing for a while. It's a, correct me if I'm wrong, but it has zero percent interest on the loan, so it's just, it's just a straight nine hundred and eighty thousand dollar loan from the MWRA to replace lead water line, service lines. Obviously needed. Would you like to give a little more?
Oh, yeah, it's a continuation of our lead line removal initiative. We've been committed to this program. DEP mandates have actually increased the number that we're required to remove each year. Not only now are they looking at the full lead services, but they're adding in the partial lead services as well in their calculation. So it's fourteen percent of any remaining lead line, whether it's full lead line or a partial, which is just on, it's ninety-nine services rounding up to a hundred. And that's what that number is, to remove one hundred lead line services.
All right, anyone else like to be heard in favor or in opposition to this issue? Seeing none, we will close the public hearing, and this will be coming up in old business. Let's see, public comment. Yes, Mr. Malios.
I'm silly Malios, precinct five. Denise, great job.
Thank you.
In the election last week.
Appreciate it.
It's a long day. I did not realize that.
Oh, yeah.
You guys did a great job, and you guys get enough credit from the community about it, so.
Appreciate it. Thank you.
Done job. So we had the big vote on the firehouse, and I kind of took it upon myself to put it out on Facebook to see why people were against the, against the, the, the firehouse being built. I think you guys have done an amazing job trying to push for firehouses to be built. And just because the outcome of the vote was a no does not mean that we put our heads down and we pout about it. We have to figure out a, another solution, right? Because we do need this. We all know that. So I just want to share some, some information. There were six hundred and fifty-eight votes. It was not six hundred and fifty-eight people, because what I did is I allowed people to select more than one option. And I gave eight different items as to why they felt that this did not go through. Number one being location, the second being the debt exclusion, the third, the initial presentation, the fourth was to wait on the MWRA to ask for contracts to be negotiated, removal of historical building, traffic congestion in the area, displacement of current tenants, and then the last was we need a master plan before making a decision. And, and the number one, the number one category was location. I believe it was like thirty-four percent of, of people that did place their vote did say that location was the big issue. And then following up was the MWRA, and then we needing a master plan. So I'm just going to say, take the information as, as you get it. I was just curious to see. I voted in favor for it, but I wanted to get an idea as to why people said no. And so it, it seems like there is a trend here that the location of the property is, is it, what's holding us back? Dig deeper. I don't know if it's, you know, purchasing the two new building, two buildings to, to tier them down and build, build up, or I'll leave it on the Firehouse Building Committee to investigate it further. But I just felt like, as a community, I, I think not a lot of people attended the Monday night or Tuesday night meetings. And so, you know, I think we need to utilize social media a little bit more, and a positive note. Utilize it a little bit more and, and get our community more involved. I know that it was easy for me to just click the poll button right on the page. And so, you know, I think Ms. Wojcik uses the Winter Massachusetts Facebook page, Mr. Marine or anything. I mean, I don't think it would be a bad idea if, you know, these types of polls, they go out, just to get a feel of where our community is at. If you notice, we always say engagement is an issue. This is what we get, right? I mean, like, it's the same faces every single time, and then when someone has a problem, we throw it on social media, and we don't end up showing up to the meetings. So, you know, if we have to adapt, we might as well try something new to get a little more engagement in trying to hear people's voices and opinions, but that's all I have for tonight.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yep, thank you, Vasily, for doing that. You know, I'll take the positive spin and say sixty-six percent of the people didn't say it was location, but. It's, it's, you know what, there's, I personally take responsibility. I think a lot of it is education. I think the town manager and I met this afternoon, and we've talked multiple times since the election, and I think we'll be coming forward with, with variations of, of plans for people to take a look at and might even use some of the, of the information, but the thought process with looking at polls and to, to get people's opinions on certain things. But I still believe a lot of it is education and understanding. So I thank you so much for always being there to help out, and that information is valuable, right?
Yeah.
You know, all information is, is valuable, it's how you use it. But we will be, you know, we are committed to having a firehouse slash public safety building in, in the very near future, and, and I'm sure there will be something to bring forward to, there will be something to bring forward to the community in the next couple of months. So stay tuned, and, and again, as Vasily said, be active and ask questions early and, and just get the right information. But thank you again. Other public comments? Yes.
Bill Schwick, please be back. First of all, I'd like to commend Mr. Malios for doing that. One comment I would say a lot of folks aren't on Facebook, so that, that kind of skews your result. As you probably know, I spent a lot of time campaigning for some candidates this year, and I had a lot of discussion with people about a number of issues, including the firehouse. Universally, everybody I talked to believed we needed a new firehouse. There were a lot of questions raised. And I think Vasily mentioned some of them: location, the process, the, where the tenants want to go, the cost, what about the middle school site. So there's a lot of questions. And I would urge you folks, rather than bringing forth a proposal, to really engage the public in the choosing of the, of the proposal, and lay out all the options, pluses and minuses, so people can weigh in on all those choices. I think, being on the Board of Health, I know people question, people in government now and on boards, people are very questioning of everybody, so when you come forth with a proposal, even though you think it's a good one, and you folks have studied, and I trust you've studied a lot of things, and you feel that was the best thing, choice at the time, people have a natural skepticism nowadays of people in public office, in fact, in any profession. So I think you really need to present all the options, the pluses and minuses, and let the public have some choices. And maybe you put together a question offering more than one alternative, and the one with the most votes gets the choice. I think people need to feel that they're, they're part of the process, not at the end, just having something put before them, and that's it, up or down. Thank you.
Thank you. And I, and I do agree, one, one of the most important thing that I think you said there was, and, and I felt it also, that it seems like eighty-five to ninety percent of the people in town believe we need a fire station.
Yes.
So, and, and I think they were pretty clear in speaking afterwards, saying, you know, this is not that we don't believe we need one. We just either want more information, we, you know, we didn't understand this, or we, like, the site, or whatever it happened to be. So we will be incredibly more detailed in the coming months. Yes.
Thank you. I think location is a blanket cover. I think there were many questions within location.
There was, including.
It wasn't just one reason, location. I, I came up with at least four from the people I spoke to.
But you, the town will be hearing much more about details in the, in the coming months. Other public comment this evening? All right. Mr. DeRoz and Ms. Swope are waiting for January to start speaking.
Or plenty to say, man.
Or not.
Good answer, good answer. Well, there is the three-month breaking-in period where there's no comments allowed, right?
I'll say one thing really quick, since you.
John DeRoz, precinct six.
Precinct six. The very last point you just hit on, I think mission accomplished in terms of making sure that everybody is fully aware that a new fire station is absolutely needed. And I couldn't agree more that the need to act is, is now, and the need to listen is now. I know I find myself going on Facebook and reading through lots of comments, taking lots of screenshots to try to somehow capture that, that feedback, because there are a lot of people who are not on Facebook, but there are a lot who are and are vocal, and I wish that they would show up in person more often to a public hearing. So we need to try to work on that, but at least they are expressing themselves in one way or another. But, you know, living literally around the corner and looking out my window at the apartment building on Veterans Road that burned, it just is a constant daily reminder for me that we need to attend to this, and we are living under some unsafe conditions until we tackle this. And honestly, after I saw the vote come in that night, all I could really think about was Chief Wiley and, and the team of firefighters, and how quickly we need to act. So you obviously have Suzanne and my commitment to, you know, research all the options, look at all the options, engage constantly and quickly, so that we can.
Okay, thank you very much. Any other public comment? All right, correspondence, Denise.
We got a letter from Bill Schmidt in reference to the noise at the airport. I believe John Aronoff would request it to be on the Board of Health agenda, so you're looking into that.
He had him at our meeting.
He was at your meeting, John Asher, okay. And Chris Yodas and Dale Dunbar, they're in support of the Memorial's committee motion that will be presented in new business.
Okay. And that is it. Committee reports, council.
Just one piece of correspondence.
Yes.
Just the, I'm sure we'll get into this in the town manager report, just the traffic and the construction on Revere Street. Something that I heard a lot about this weekend, so just wanted to make sure that I got that in there officially in the record.
I actually heard it. Yes, we will be talking more about that in a little bit. Council Fusillo, committee reports.
Yes, so we met earlier this evening. We had one motion on the agenda. That was the one that we already had a public hearing for. It was the loan for nine hundred and eighty thousand dollars to pay, pay costs of replacing lead water service lines. After, you know, a discussion about that, making sure it was an interest-free loan, as well as, you know, how much we had left, which I believe is four hundred?
Four twenty-three.
Four twenty-three for houses left.
Full lead.
Full, full lead, oh, yeah, full lead.
Another four hundred plus of partials.
Okay, of that. So after going through that, we decided that, you know, this is a great thing, and we gave it a unanimous positive recommendation.
All right, and we will go over that in old business. School Department report. School committee met last night, and the focus of the meeting was on MCAS presentation. Each of the four principals came before us and gave their presentations and plans to address MCAS scores. Like in every report, there's some positive, there's some negative, there's some good stuff that we're doing, and there's some areas of opportunity, right? And they've tried to break it down as granular as they can. I think they are on the right track. They've addressed a lot of issues, especially with, in terms of ELA in math now. They have a, a math program throughout elementary school, starting in first grade now, which has not been done. It was scattered throughout different programs. Now we are on a consistent program throughout the elementary schools, and, and we think that's going to show very positive results. You know, one thing that I, I was impressed with is, and I said this last night, education is a process, right? You just don't come into first grade, and everybody's a genius, and it takes time. And what is very good about these reports is you look towards the end, and you look at the tenth grade MCAS, and you see that, you know, there's some struggles in the earlier years, but the school system, superintendent, the administrative staff, teachers, they all put, they all get together and do a good job. And at the end of the, at the end of the day, when it comes to tenth grade, they're incredibly successful. And, you know, as the saying goes, no child left behind, and you, you want to make sure everyone does the best they can. But we are in the ninetieth, ninety-something percentile for kids passing, getting to that stage by tenth grade, which is very impressive. And I thank the principals for their work and their plans. You know, we looked, we talked about goals and needs and stuff like that, and then we talked about, you know, there was, there was a lot of talk about staffing and wanting to have more teachers and, but then we talk about space, too, and we look at the beautiful new buildings we have, and there's not a lot of space left. So it's, it's a delicate balance that they really do a tremendous job in. And again, I thank the principals for their presentation. It was, you know, school committee meetings are usually not quite as lengthy as a council meeting, but last night made up for that, and, but it was well worth it. It was great information, and there was some really positive feedback. So that was ninety percent of the meeting, so I don't have anything else to report on that. Obviously, the other thing that was talked about a little bit, there was some, a bunch of All-Stars, which I don't have the name, All-Conference All-Stars for the fall season. Sports teams did really well, and I know everybody's geared up for the Thanksgiving Day game, which is next Thursday, which is incredible that Thanksgiving is here already, but we wish the Vikings all the best and to beat the crap out of them. That is, if a school department report, Tony, Town Manager report.
Thank you, Mr. Council President. I attended on Zoom a meeting with regard to the ferry. We had all the stakeholders from Lynn, Quincy, East Boston, you know, ran ferries over the last summer. We had a meeting to talk about plans for next season, you know, things we're going to ask for from SDOT and MBTA. So that was a really good meeting. Everybody's really happy with the progress, happy with the ferry service, and we want to keep it going. So, well, we know we're in a two-year lease right now. We want to make sure we really do well in year two. So, you know, the MBTA takes on that ferry as a permanent route, so that's the plan. And next steps, I attended that meeting with Council Aiello, so thank you for that. We will be looking to set the tax rate at the next meeting on the twenty-eighth. I have Nate Kramer in from the Assessors Office, along with Diane Mack and Kathy Hickey and the Board of Assessors. So we'll have those folks in on the November twenty-eighth meeting. With regard to the fire station, you know, one of the things, you know, we talk about location, but obviously it's, the need's there. It's critical. We have to get moving on it. So, you know, one of the things that, per the charter, mass regulations with regard to procurement, because we're looking to, you know, potentially lease the land, I am going to put together an RFI for the middle school site. That was one of the things we heard constantly from people is, you know, probably some skepticism with regard to the plans, because that building's sat there for seven years, and nothing's been done. So people want to see a plan. They want to see some action on that. So I'm in the process of putting the finishing touches on an RFI. We hope to get out towards the end of next week. And that'll be for the middle school site, to include a sports complex, hotel, and any other economic development ideas that could be out there. So we're going to get that going, bring it back to the council, you know, certainly I think there'll be some interest. So that's what we're working on. So I wanted to, I don't think we could like, you know, it was a stressed day. We can't wait. We have to get moving on this. I mean, the cost goes up at an average of a hundred thousand dollars a month. I wouldn't be doing my job if I didn't get all the information we needed to, you know, inform the council, inform the residents. And, you know, we're also going to look at, thank you for doing the Facebook survey, but there's another software out there called Zen City that we're looking at to do community-wide surveys, to do exactly what we talked about, different options, different segments, to try to get. So when we go out with another ballot question, we're pretty confident that, you know, the community got community buy-in, so. Those are other things we talked about and are looking at. We're also hosting a public hearing. We're finally in the end stages of getting the Comcast contract done, so we'll be holding a meeting here December twelfth. So anybody who wants to attend, feel free. We'll have a copy of the draft contract. Attorney Bill Solomon, who negotiated the contract with us with Comcast, will be here to go over the specifics, any sort of changes, highlights, things like that. Talked about Thanksgiving, holiday hours for town hall. We will be closing at noon next Wednesday on eleven twenty-two. Then we close for the weekend. We'll reopen on Monday, the twenty-seventh. I was asked to give an update on bag sales with regard to the overflow bags. We have through October, total of seventy-four hundred bags are sold for approximately twenty-two thousand dollars. So that's four months, so you break that out, you know, probably sell more around the holidays, so probably looking anywhere from seventy to eighty thousand, you know, this year, if those numbers hold. You know, Woodside Ace Hardware, Ace Hardware is definitely the largest. They buy consistently, you know, four cases a month, so they're selling them there, and they have for the last, you know, since we started doing this back in July, so thank you to them. And I, everyone else who's selling the bags, we appreciate that. And then lastly, the Revere Street. Certainly, they, we all know they started grinding it and regrading the street last week. Director Cal and I had a long conversation Friday afternoon, I believe it was. We, nobody was happy with the condition, so we called the contractor back out on Friday, told them to get back. They had to regrade it for the weekend. It wasn't satisfactory. They came back Friday, left, came back Friday, regraded it. They do have a plan to have the first coat of binder down, I believe, by the end of this week.
Yeah, so the binder's going to happen in two phases, as the manager said. First two inches, it's a four-inch binder cost. First two inches, they, they're still committed to having the first two inches down by Friday. So curb to curb, we'll be black. We'll be smooth through the weekend. They'll return next week to do the second two inches of payment. That said, real quick, if you don't mind.
Yep, yep, I, we talked about this earlier, yeah.
I certainly share the same frustration as everybody did with the way the, the roadway was left Friday afternoon before a long weekend. We did, like Tony said, we did call them back and, and kind of feel got them back on track. But with that, it's really, really important, especially going into the tip project, that we maintain reasonable expectations. This isn't a resurfacing project. This is a full-depth reclamation. This is roadway reconstruction. The same process is going to happen on the other leg of Revere Street between McGee's Corner and Crest Ave. There's, you know, there was four different phases of utility work. Now this is a full reclamation to achieve proper curb height, seven inches, and a, a road surface is going to last for decades, right? Revere Street, if you remember, before this process started, had no curb reveal, because the easiest thing to do on a corridor that is so populated and heavily traveled, it was just easier to do an overlay. Years and years of overlay left us with no, with no curb reveal, poor drainage, poor, you know, surface, potholes. So in order to do things right in a small area that's so, you know, heavily populated and traveled, there, there's going to be inconvenience, there's going to be dust, there's going to be noise, and it's going to be frustrating. And I understand it's, it's been a two-year project, but four different utilities have been replaced, and now a full, a full reconstruction of the roadway. Just bear in mind that that same thing is going to happen on the other leg of Revere Street. So as much as we will stand on top of contractors and try to mitigate these things, it's very important that we do maintain expectations that this is intrusive construction. It's not a simple mill and overlay like we see in some other areas, you know, with some of the roadwork we've been doing. I, I just needed to get that out there, so that everybody's expectations are where they need to be going into the tip project, which is starting in March.
And rest assured, I mean, the police chief, fire chief, myself, Director Cal, we're talking daily about this and what steps can be taken. It's, you know, I, you know, kudos to everybody involved. I mean, it's a tough project, trying to keep the roadway open. So, I mean, it's, it is frustrating, but, you know, we're getting to the finish line now, at least on this leg, so it's good news. And with that, I'll certainly open up to questions.
Council Belcher.
Thank you. Thank you for the information on the project, and I think it's good to have these construction updates in the Town Managers Blog, but I think a lot of people don't understand the terminology. Like, if I say you're regrading a street, I don't know how to say it besides regrading, like, you know what I mean? So maybe.
Is that how you say it?
But like, maybe we can do something, be like, okay, there, it's a street reclamation. What does that mean for you? It means noise, it means dust, it means, you know what I mean? Just make it really transparent, so people know what to expect, so I don't send any more angry emails about the streets.
Yeah, exactly. I'll always.
But you know what I mean? I, I think just translating it a little more into layman's terms may help, especially as we go into the tip project.
What happens is, and I'm not on Facebook, but what happens is the social media takes off.
Yes.
The wrong information gets out there, and that, that's hard to reel back in.
Right. But if we can be ahead of it, you know what I mean, and say, this is exactly what's happening, this is what to expect.
Everybody needs to be telling the same story.
Right.
And that's, that's here, there, it starts with all of us.
Thank you.
Council Mac.
Thank you, Council President. Like, the word binder, what exactly is a binder, you know?
The binder cost is, is the asphalt cost below the, the wearing surface, right? So it's your base asphalt.
Okay, so that's going to stay.
That will stay through the winter. What they'll do is they'll, they'll get the binder, which is, which is asphalt. It's, it's a more coarse asphalt. It's a three-quarter stone. When you go to the swearing surface, it's a three-eighths stone, so it compacts a lot tighter and smoother.
Right.
In the reclamation process, they, they remove all the castings, which are your manholes, your water gate boxes. Those all come out, the road gets pulverized, gets graded, then the four inches of binder go down. And that's how it's going to be through the winter. When the four inches of binder go down, they'll raise, they'll reinstall all the castings, the manhole covers, the water gates, in case there's a sewer blockage or, or an issue that we have to get on these valves or in manholes. In the, in the spring, before the tip project starts, they'll raise the castings, that inch and a half that they need for the wearing surface.
And then they put the wearing surface.
That will go down, and then the road will be.
So the binder that's being put this winter is actually staying. It's going to be there for.
Underneath the wearing surface.
Got it. All right, yeah. I mean, I agree with all of what has been said, both in terminology, vocabulary, and in terms of expectations. I think that's very wise, and I think it's good to have a unanimous voice. Unfortunately, to social media's point, we can't police Facebook.
That's right.
It's just too much misinformation out there, and sometimes when you get out there with the right information, you get lynched for saying the, the truth. So sometimes it's like we have to have like a body of people, like we have to have ambassadors like Vasily and, and other people that are on social media to, to stand up for the truth that come to these things. But I, 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 I think that I wanted to get back to the firehouse and RFI and Comcast, if you don't mind. Quickly, Comcast, that's a renegotiation that's happening?
Correct.
And in that renegotiation, can we make sure that the service level is high enough so that they actually warrant the money? so that they actually warrant the money that they're asking for?
I, constant, yeah. I mean, I'd like, the other day I called and they didn't have any, they didn't have any reported issues. So, they were doing some more digging about that when you called.
Most of us have given up.
No, yeah.
Sometimes it does feel as though it's just they're okay with mediocre. And when you're paying top-notch dollar for, uh, internet service, you should expect service that's reliable. So, I would say that as part of the negotiation, they should have metrics of performance that actually back up what they're asking for.
Yep. Right. And they give us money, right? So, we, we allow them to sell in town. I mean, obviously, we've tried to get Fios. If Fios is not interested in coming and running the wire to have another option in town.
Right.
Because they, with, you know, basically, it's kind of going down to just internet, right? I mean, cable's kind of-
Right.
Not completely, but certainly phasing out. And then streaming becomes more and more popular. So, um, so we're not going to have many options other than that. And then T-Mobile, obviously, a lot of people use that. So, uh, what we're trying to do is make sure we get money for capital, um, you know, for the WCAT, um, and, you know, making sure we ma- maintain the money so that the revenue stream that they have to run the cable channel is still there. You know, which is getting harder and harder because that's supposed to be to broadcast the, the local government channels, the school and elementary and, you know, general public and general government. But, you know, as less and less people are watching cable, it's just, you know, it's, this, this contract makes it more difficult because, you know, they're changing their model to kind of focusing on the internet. So-
I did get some, uh, correspondence from my constituents saying this is a, a chronic problem of, you know, poor, uh, you know, speeds.
Yep.
So, I don't know what our rep is, you know, saying or doing, but-
When we get to the contract phase, they'll come into, you know, Angela will come in and, you know, give a presentation. We can certainly ask all those questions at that
It'd be nice to know if there's some truth to the fact that they're up to snuff or if they're not.
And they are looking to upgrade. They have said that. They're, are going to be doing upgrades. So-
Um, if you don't mind, I just wanted to go into the RFI and Firehouse. Uh, the RFI, I love the fact that you want to get the RFI out there. But one of the things I'm concerned about is, A, do you need help getting that out to as many developers in the, in the area, the region, uh, as possible? Do we need to consider having some consultant help get this done?
We're going to put it out through all the normal procurement means, you know, central register. I mean, there, all the developers and the corporations are watching that. And certainly, we have a list of already developed as far as, you know, hotel developers, you know, colleges, you know, YMCA's. I mean, everybody we want to bid on it or at least take a look at it. So, we'll make sure we get it out there.
Okay. And are you, uh, and how, how it's written is very important. So, will it be the way it was written before where the, um, where the, is it, so how will it be written is the question?
We'll be focused on what we want, you know, with all the points we want to hit with regard to the sports complex, making sure we, you know, the, the two sheets of ice and everything we talked about before when, you know, Council President made it.
Other options.
Yeah.
I think it would be more open.
That's what I'm saying. It needs to be more open.
And also looking at, you know, biotech and hotels, you know. So, all the economic possibilities there, you know, for economic development, not necessarily housing per se, but, you know, looking to do what we said we wanted to do and have economic development there and get some activity to see what's out there, see what interest is out there.
So, an RFI doesn't actually get to the point where we would say something like, in exchange for this land, we would need X amount of parking space?
We're asking, request for information. We're asking them to bring us ideas. Say, what can you do there? What do you think works there? And what do you-
So, you don't think that two RFIs would be appropriate, having one for a sports complex and one for something more open?
It, it, it's going to, whether it's two or all rolled into one, they're going to look for the same information. So, I mean, they're all going to read it. And, you know, we're going to make sure we highlight all those areas. So-
And so, in some RFIs, some people would say that the big picture would be to have the whole lot available. Others would say that this is basically, the rink stays here in this corner and everything else is developable. Is, what would you, where do you-
I'm not advertising not having the rink. So, we're going to advertise with the rink there and then the rest of the lot vacant. Yeah.
Okay. Um, all right. And then, uh, lastly, the Firehouse. I think this was brought up earlier. Um, is there a possibility to get a ballot question that has option A, B, multiple options so that people can choose of the choices? Have you seen in any of the years you've been in service doing this type of work, a ballot question?
I've seen those as non-binding questions, you know, just kind of feelers, like it's like a survey. I've seen-
Just like a survey.
Non-binding ballot questions. I've seen it like done like that for that. But once you get to the final, you know, we're asking for a thirty, forty, fifty million dollar debt exclusion. I haven't seen it with options like that. Now, not that you can't, we could look into it, but I haven't seen it done like that yet in my sixteen years of doing this.
I think it goes without saying, we all want, uh, on the, the ballot question for next November, the presidential election, to have a, another option to get this Firehouse done. And-
Just, just for clarification, we're not saying that it's going to be next November.
We're not.
It could be anytime. Could be, we have-
There's a primary in March.
There's a primary in March. There's a primary in September. There's an election in November. We could have a special election. So, we're not-
Okay.
Saying that-
Yeah.
We're waiting until next November.
Okay, great.
And to get to your point, to try to do some of that legwork before you put the ballot question out is what I was talking about before and what, so you talked about as far as doing the surveys, engaging the community. So, you get more confidence as to what the community wants and what, you know, will pass when you get to the ballot. So-
Yeah. Yeah, I would love to see a professional, um, you know, uh, presentation of all of the well-thought-out options that we could come up with for location and then have it so that the people can have, in a sense, a referendum with something like a Zen City or, you know, uh, you know, a Vassili-
Right.
Survey. All right, thank you.
Well-
Council Flahcut.
Thank you. Steve, what you just reported to us about how, exactly what's going to happen, that was very informative. Is there some way we could put out in some media, I don't know-
Yeah.
Exactly that detailed information to explain to us exactly what's going on?
Yeah, we can, we, I'll talk to Larissa. We can get that out on the blog this week.
That would be good because it was really clear from Steve.
And, um, that's it. Council Fusillo?
Um, last question, really quick. It's, it's back to the internet thing. Um, as somebody who uses the internet a lot-
Yeah.
A lot of information on it. Um, one of the biggest problems that the town has is not necessarily the download speed. Um, as somebody who pays for a lot, for a large internet plan, um, it's the upload speeds. They're not adequate to what, you know, surrounding cities and towns get. Um, so, what a lot of people are frustrated about and a lot of people are seeing is a really slow upload speed. And that's something that Comcast in Winthrop, specifically in Winthrop, has not done great with. Um, so I think that's one of the biggest concerns moving forward is just like talking about upload speeds as well as download speeds.
Okay. Thank you.
All right. And, uh, before we move on, I'm going to use this time because it's right in the middle of the meeting. So, um, last year, we started with the Christmas tree, right? We came back after a little hiatus with the, talk about infrastructure, the center project that was a three-year or so project, right? And we came back and got a big tree down there, lit, had it lit along with the center, had the typical dedication on, uh, day after Thanksgiving, which we're going to also do this year with Santa coming in on the fire truck. Um, but one thing I talked with the Town Manager last year about is that the tree looked very bare, right? And we were trying to think of something different. Uh, so we came up with, uh, a memory star program, basically. And now, um, I thank Betsy Shane in the Chamber for really taking it that next step forward and kind of taking over the project. So, we will be having, uh, you could get this on the town website. I know you could get it at the Chamber.
Yeah.
There's a little, uh-
QR code.
-jiggy here.
QR code.
QR code that you could scan. Um, the memory stars are twenty-five dollars. Basically, it's an acrylic star. They'll be hung on the tree. Uh, you can write on it yourselves or the town will write on it for you, uh, in memory of whoever, uh, or any type of star you wish to get. The stars are twenty-five dollars. There will be a portion of the proceeds. This will be, uh, technically, it's a chamber event. A portion of the proceeds will be going to Miyamore. Um, it will be a fifteen-dollar-
Renewal, yeah.
Renewal for the following year if you want. If you choose not to do it the following year, that's fine. Uh, the town or the Chamber will, will store these, uh, and we will hang them from the tree. So, um, you know, I think that's a really nice start. In, in future years, maybe we'll do different things, different colors, whatever. But it's, um, you know, I think this is really good. It's dedicate a star to be hung on the holiday tree in French Square. A portion of the proceeds, again, will be donated to Miyamore. So, thank you to the Chamber for taking this on. Uh, thank you to Tony and, uh, Larissa also, who had a lot of work in this. I mean, I-
Larissa did a lot of work on that.
We've been asking her since June to look up and try to find the perfect star. So, uh, I just wanted that information to get out as well. Uh, CDICR?
Uh, yeah, they did have a meeting. I was not able to attend, so I will reach out to, uh, Andrea Baez and get an update for the next meeting.
All right. And, old business. Council Fusillo?
Yes. Uh, this is a motion for the lead line replacement project, like we spoke about earlier. Motion reads, I move that, uh, the Winthrop Town Council adopt the following order, order, that the town appropriates the sum of nine-hundred-eighty-thousand dollars to pay the cost of replacing lead water service lines, including all costs incidental and related thereto, that to meet this appropriation, the treasurer with the approval of the Town Manager is au- is authorized to borrow said amount under and pursuant to Mass General Law, Chapter Forty-four, Section Eight, Subsection Five, or pursuant to any other enabling authority, and to issue bonds or notes of town, uh, of the town therefore, that the treasurer with the approval of the Town Manager is authorized to borrow all or a portion of such amounts from the Massachusetts Water Resources Authority, the authority, and in connection thereto, uh, therewith, to enter into a loan agreement, um, into a loan agreement and/or financial assistance agreement with the authority, and otherwise to contract with the authority with the respect to such loan and for any grants or aid available for the project or for the financing thereof, that the Town Manager is authorized to accept and expend any grants to, uh, or aid available for the project or for the financing thereof, provided that the amount of the authorized borrowing for the project shall be reduced by the amount of any such grants or aid received, and that the Town Manager is authorized to take any other action necessary to carry out this project. So, again, it's for the amount of nine-hundred-and-eighty-thousand dollars at a zero percent interest rate.
All right. There is a motion coming out of committee. It has positive recommendation, does not require a second. Again, this will service about a hundred services?
Yes.
And this is an interest-free loan from the MWRA. Uh, this is not reinventing the whale. This is something we've been doing for many years and will continue to do until we are at zero. Um, any questions, discussions? Council Munson?
So, I was under the impression that we had something like four-hundred-and-fifty lead line services still outstanding?
Four-twenty-three.
Full, full lead. Full. And then we have another four-hundred-plus partial. And, but this loan would be simply to pay for the one-hundred?
Yes, we do X amount a year over, um, ten-year program.
So, to replace, so on average, it would be about ten grand a service?
No.
Well, no.
Yeah, ten thousand.
Ten thousand times a hundred?
Yeah.
Yeah.
But that's, that's, that's for the, that's for the lead line. That's for your, your asphalt restoration.
Yeah, that's everything.
It's not just, uh, engineering.
Oh, okay. So, the lead line service to replace that alone can't be even close to ten grand?
They come in, I mean, they vary. The, the bidders will bid it differently, you know. Everybody puts their money in different spots.
Oh, so we are bidding it out?
Oh, absolutely.
Okay. I didn't know if this was a town service that we were taking it and just doing it ourselves.
No, it was contracted.
And so, uh, this is standard, so the price that we have here for a million, this is just to cover our butts in the event that it goes over any ancillaries?
That's the budget, right. So, I mean, the, the bid could come in less than that. Hopefully, it won't come in over that. But that, that's the ask to MWRA for the budget.
And you think that's reasonable?
Yeah.
Okay. No further questions. Thank you.
Any other discussion? Seeing none, roll call vote, please.
Council Honan, Council Fusillo?
Yes.
Council Munson?
Yes.
Council Belcher?
Yes.
Council DiMarco?
Yes.
Council Flahcut?
Yes.
Council Iello? Vice President Rogero?
Yes.
President Luteri?
Yes. Motion passed. All right, new business, Memorials Committee. So, Memorials Committee came back and this is submitted by the Memorials Committee that the town accepts the following memorial as voted by the Memorials Committee with a positive recommendation, dedication of the tennis courts at Ingleside Park after John Domenico. Um, this has been discussed before at the Council. It, it has been at the Memorials Committee for a while. They came back with a positive recommendation. We were trying to get this on for the last meeting. We did not, we were not able to get it on. Uh, I had a few questions. My questions have been satisfied. Um, any questions on this motion?
Not a question, but I just want to speak in favor of it. Uh, do we need a motion first or do we?
Yes.
We do, we do need a motion. All right, so I'll make the motion.
Okay.
Second.
Second. Motion by Vice President Rogero, second by Council DiMarco. Any further discussion on the motion?
Uh, no. Just want to speak in favor of this. Um, I had the pleasure of meeting Mr. Domenico when I was playing high school tennis. Um, he is, I think, still a precinct six resident. Um, but, um, he was a principal coach. Um, I think just the, I couldn't think of a better person to, to name this after. So, I'm completely in favor of this one.
Any more sentiments?
I met him recently at a reunion, high school reunion. And, uh, what a class act. Um, I'm obviously not from Winthrop, so I don't know the long history. But every time I, his name comes up, he's just, uh, so highly regarded, both as a principal, a tennis coach, also a, um, an exalted ruler at the Elks, um, a former baseball coach for ten years. So, his accolades are exemplary. And I think the word that keeps coming back is he's a benevolent man. And it sounds like this guy deserves it. Let's do it.
You were not a classmate. You were working the event.
I was working the event. That's right.
Any further discussion? And I echo the sentiments of everyone here. Mr. Domenico has been, uh, was an incredible asset to the town. We thank him for his service. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Or is no, the ayes have it. All right. So, this is submitted by me, that the Town Council approved the Town Clerk's office to use Election Voter Information Input Machine, or PollPads, for all further elections. If choose to do so, or take any other action relative thereto. Uh, I'll ask for a motion. Motion by Council Belcher, second by Council Fusillo. And I will ask Town Clerk to talk a little bit about PollPads.
We've had the PollPads for quite a while and haven't used them. So, I'm trying to put them into production to use them. Uh, part of this will also include, um, um, the scheduling of a webinar or someone wants to meet in person to how to use the PollPads. And, um, I think they're going to help with the elections as for the process of it, making it a lot quicker and easier on everybody's end.
What is it?
It's, it's almost like an iPad, but it syncs with the state computer. So, I think it's easier that way. And, and we may use them. We may not use them.
We actually had one. Didn't we use one at the, uh, middle school?
We used it at the middle school.
We used one at the middle school this year, this past couple of weeks ago. And so, when people coming in, they weren't sure what precinct where they were voting, and they could pull it up instantaneously and tell them.
Exactly. Do it immediately.
If the Town Manager might have a few words to say on this also, because I know he's used these in other-
Yeah, they came in real handy when we were doing the, during COVID, we had the outdoor town meetings. Um, you know, the prior town, you had, um, they were great. Um, we were able to, you know, network them all, have multiple, you know, people to check in at different locations because we had different parking issues. And it just, it really sped everything up. So, it's just they're, they're a great asset to any, you know, election, you know, for the clerks to use and for the registrars.
Questions? Council, uh, DiMarco?
So, this, the, uh, the PollPads, that just directs people in the right air, in the right spot. That doesn't, that doesn't change the actual voting process once you get in there. Is that correct?
Well, it doesn't change the voting process. But what it does change is where, you know, you walk in, they have those big books and you could look at them.
Yeah, look up everybody.
Now, they don't have to. It'll just come up on where you go.
Right. No, what I was asking is, I, what I was saying is that people aren't going to actually be voting on that.
No, no, no.[1695.02] No, no, no.
Okay, okay.
Just to check people in.
Right, yeah.
Yeah.
Vice President Rogero?
Is there a cost for the service or did we already absorb that cost when we bought them originally? Like, is there like a maintenance?
Nope, nope, we've already done it, actually our maintenance contract is coming up next year.
Okay.
But other than that, no, we've been.
It's like a typical software though, it's not a huge lift.
It's not like a, yeah.
Council Flockhart?
Thank you. It always surprised me, I worked at the, in the polls before I became councilor, I was able to work at the polls and I did for several years and it was amazing to me how many people showed up at the poll place with no clue what their precinct was. So this sounds like it would really speed things up tremendously. I think it's a great idea.
Council Belcher?
Thank you. I worked during the 2020 election and, and we used them and they were wonderful, it really expedited everything and all the information's right there, it was a really great thing.
Council Munson?
So do we, so we already have and own them?
Yes.
And so this motion is basically just to make sure that they're in use?
Well, not to make sure they're necessarily in use, but that we have the ability to use them.
Yeah, the state requires if any change of election products are changed at any time, if it includes inside the ballot room per se, then you have to let the state know that you are allowed to use them.
One we were just using last week wasn't inside the ballot, it was outside in the hallway.
I see. And so how many do we have and do we need more, is this?
No, we have eight and so I have six for six precincts and two backups.
Sounds like an entrepreneur, yeah.
Any other discussion? We have made a motion, yes, Karen Chavez?
Just as a user, both Council Belcher and I worked the early voting in 2020 and as you know, that was, it was overpowering and we found that the poll pads really, really helped us
Right.
to get people in and out. And as a person who does early voting every year, using it in the front lobby of the rotundo of town hall, no matter how many people I have in line, they just move, it just moves and moves and moves and moves. It's just so, so much easier. And the other thing is, we're not calling the town clerk's office in any given election, I probably call the town clerk's office twenty to twenty-five times easily because somebody comes in and says, you know, we're registered to vote and they're not registered, but I'm gonna know it right away.
Thank you, Karen. Any other questions? Seeing none, I'll ask for a vote, all those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed, no, the ayes have it.
It's kinda like just me and you.
Appointment, I have one appointment this evening. Motion that the town council accept the appointment made by town council president to appoint John Masero to the Citizens Finance Commission for a term to expire for the remainder for the remainder of the term to June thirtieth, 2026. There's a motion, is there a second? Second by Council Belcher, any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, all those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed, no, the ayes have it, thank you. Public comment. Mr. Schmidt?
Yeah, Bill Schmidt, please stop, just wanna thank the council for voting in favor of the tennis courts, named for John Domenico, he's a tremendous man. He was my tennis coach in high school, became principal, I played tennis with him until a few years ago, he's a great guy, so I really appreciate it, thank you.
Thank you. Mr. DeRoz.
John DeRoz, precinct six. First of all, Happy Bladed Veterans Day to everyone. I happen to have the pleasure of being born on Veterans Day, so it's a special day for me in many ways.
Good day.
Especially when I was younger, being able to skip school because of the holidays. Just one quick thing on the RFI, kind of following on John Munson's comments. Tony, is there a, is there more information you can give people in terms of how the requirements on the RFI are gonna be listed? The different ideas, you mentioned a few that have been popular with folks. I think it would be great to have some transparency with folks about how the description of possible ideas for that site at the old middle school will make the RFI.
Sure.
So if you could comment on that and then also just really quickly, I know having been on the receiving end of many, many RFIs as a person in sales, it's often helpful to list out the kinds of outcomes that we're looking for, because that helps the respondents to the RFI basically tell us how their proposal will help us meet our ultimate goals, whether that's revenue for the town or all the other outcomes we'd like to see.
Yeah, I mean, yeah, the first part of the question is, once we get it together, we'll get a draft and we'll get it up on the website. We've got it, I basically got it together, so we're almost done with it actually, so. But I will get it out to the public, we'll put it up on the website, people to review and then they can comment and, you know, and go from there. So that was always the plan. And then it will be out, it's a public document anyway, it'll be out on what I call Central Register and procurement laws, Mass, you know, thirty B and others, they lay out specific requirements for RFIs and what needs to be in there and use it as a procurement tool to gain information, so you can actually put together the project that you want, so.
And you're asking respondents to show how they would be able to produce the kinds of results that we're looking for?
Yep, we'll let it up, yep.
Great, perfect, perfect.
Yeah, and I'll be working on that with our town attorney as well, so.
Perfect, thank you for all your work on that, I drafted a few of those RFIs.
It's a lot, yeah.
It's not quick work, so, thank you.
Ms. Swob.
Hi, Suzanne Swob, precinct four. Tony, what kind of information do you think we need about that site before we go out for a RFI? In other words, do we have a site plan, do we have?
We have a site plan.
Do we have all the, all the infrastructure information that we need?
Yep, we know exactly when it has to be done for stormwater, the upgrades that need to be done. Yeah. Yeah, we have all that information, so we'll be able, those costs will be borne in there, you know, some of them won't be borne by the project, some will probably be borne by us, but yeah, we have all that information that we need to go out.
Sure.
Yes.
Yeah. I mean, this is a request for information, right? So I mean, you know, we're not gonna have soil samples and stuff like that, they'll do that as they get in, but this is somebody saying, we like Winthrop, we like that site, we know it's X number of acres, the buildings will be torn down, you know, this, to find out if the concepts that we put out there are even realistic and is, you know, interesting.
This isn't a back and forth there, so these are just questions directed to the council. Just comments really, so we're not, that's okay. But if you have another comment?
No, I just, are, are there any fixed, are there any fixed plans where the RFI would have to address, for example, the rink has to stay in that particular location? Would that be?
I think the RFI, I think the town manager stated earlier that the RFI is, is not including the rink.
Not including moving the rink, the rink's, it'll say the rink's gonna stay in place.
It'll include a ninety thousand square foot area, not including the rink.
And is that a decision that the council has made?
That's a decision that town managers make.
Put it out there for now, because I've gotten feedback from many that, you know, Winthrop will always have ice available, so we're not gonna
Yeah, no, I just
take the rink out.
Does that mean that it has to stay in that location?
That's what this means, yes.
For right now, but it's somebody.
This is a request for information, this is not, we're gonna build it.
Somebody could come to us and say, we wanna build a new rink on another location in the ice and then we'd push back and say, well, that's fine, but until you build that rink, this one's gonna stay open and then we'd, you know, allow you to do that, so. Yeah, that was one of the things, the big things with Winthrop is we'd always have a sheet of ice available, even if we're gonna build a new one, that's all.
Okay.
Yeah.
Anybody else? Yes, Pacilla?
So the man is precinct five. Tony, it seems like you've been very busy, so.
Yeah.
Great job, seriously, because it's been a lot. Do we expect a master plan or a master, master vision? I know there's one on the website, there's a few of them, I've, it's tough to kind of understand when this one came out versus that one and which one this looks at, but do we have a master plan as far as middle school site, then to the firehouse, then to phase two of the possible police and then what's to come potential?
No.
Okay. Are we looking to possibly kind of give us a vision of?
Yes.
Fantastic.
Yeah.
Great. Done. Easy. That was easy, yeah.
All right. Public relations, as we stated earlier, on the twenty-fourth, which is next Friday, day after Thanksgiving, the Chamber of Commerce Tree Lighting Celebration will occur between four and six in Winthrop Center. If you've been through the center in the last couple of days, you'll notice the lights are going up as we speak, basically. They're working on all sections of the center, so that will be a good event and I'm sure it will culminate with Santa Claus coming in on the fire truck. We are hoping for a, a big attendance and get back like the old days, the way it used to be, so.
Special thanks to Steve Keller and his team, because they're gonna be putting up the tree this weekend.
They are putting up the tree, I saw them today down there and it is not an easy undertaking, but thank you and your crew as always.
Can I ask one question about the staff?
Yes.
Program? Who's hanging one of the trees?
Steve, we're gonna be talking about that tomorrow.
On small print it says hung by Director Keller, or it says hang Director Keller, we're not sure.
If we don't own a cherry picker, we'll be renting one.
Yes, it will.
I know, we're gonna have to get a cherry picker and all the bucket truck.
We don't own one?
No, it's not gonna just be hung or by the chimney.
That was like a fun day, Steve.
Steve, you gotta get those big hooks and we're just gonna, yeah, we're gonna eight-foot step ladder.
We're trimming trees all the time.
That's great, keep your expectations, Steve.
January second, 2024, we will have the swearing-in ceremony and we will have a council meeting directly after. The location is yet to be determined, we wanna make sure it's in a location that can be live on WCAT. So we will be talking about the location in December, but January second and it will probably be six PM and then there'll be, there'll be a council meeting after. And also, before we go around the table, just wanna wish everyone a very happy Thanksgiving, stay safe, enjoy the football games, enjoy your turkey, enjoy your family, because it's, it's just a great holiday, it's no expectations, it's just being with your family and friends and eating a ton of food, so.
No expectations, literally spoken by the guy that doesn't cook.
Council Fusillo, anything?
Yes, I, I do really wanna give a quick shout-out, my cousin Catherine had her last cancer treatment, so that was a really exciting point, so.
Thank you. Council Munson?
I wanted to say congratulations to the winners, congrats John, congrats Suzanne, congrats Max, if you're watching or listening. I was also re-elected and I'm honored to be here and wanted to say thank you to all my supporters and, and but I also wanted to say that it was also wonderful, Winthrop, to actually make their voices be heard. You know, the firehouse was turned down, but it was basically a chance for Winthrop to speak and I'm, you know, it looked like, I thought it was a great turnout, so I just wanted to make sure that people understand that even though we have, we had to choose between candidates, we're still all in this together, we're on the same team, we're about, we're Team Winthrop Cares, as far as I'm concerned, so kudos to everybody that voted and to those winners and thank you.
Council Belcher?
None, thank you.
Council DiMarco?
Once again, just like to echo the sentiments of wishing everybody a happy Thanksgiving and, you know, this year, I'm thankful for all my counselors here as well as this community, it's an incredible place to be a part of.
Council Flockhart?
Yes, and I will echo those sentiments.
Vice President Rogero?
I will also echo all of those sentiments about Thanksgiving, but I will also just say that this, for myself and maybe all of us, is usually a very busy time between now and the end of the year through, through the New Years and the holidays and I think it's important to, to take some time and, and sort of just think about priorities and what we wanna do, not only in the short term, but also in the long term and the new year to come. But I will say, it gets busy because there are a lot of fun, social, charitable events that are going on and that can become overwhelming, because there's gonna, there're gonna be a lot of asks, I think, from the community for, whether it's toys or, or funds or, you know, memorial stars like the council president tonight said. So if you are willing and able to do so, you know, I would encourage you to contribute in any way you would feel comfortable to, to any of these causes that will be, you know, I'm kind of hearing rumors and grumblings now of people trying to start things for, you know, the winter months especially as, as, you know, things are getting colder. So just keep all of that in mind and, you know, if, if you do have the means, just, you know, think about those that don't during this time, so.
Thank you. With that being said, I'll ask for a motion to adjourn, motion by Council DiMarco, second by Council Belcher, any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, all those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed, no, meeting adjourned.